So. And leave, um, obviously it's city council agenda, August 4th, 5:30. Um, the invocation will be led by Tim Moltler of Cavalry Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Get a raise.
Let us pray. Dear God, as we gather for the city council meeting, and we seek your guidance and your wisdom, we pray that there would be collaboration tonight, uh, respect, uh, among one another, that you'd guide the discussions. We pray that the decisions made tonight would benefit our entire community. We express gratitude for our dedicated public servants who work so hard to keep the city going, um, including our mayor, city council members, city staff, and the various work crews, um, that work behind the scenes. What do we also lift up our brave police officers, our first responders, firefighters? We ask that you would keep them safe. Uh, we thank them for their courage and their dedication. As school season, uh, quickly approaches, we ask that you'd bless our teachers, our school staff, our students, and our families. We pray for peace and prosperity in our community. We ask that you would bless our local businesses, our schools, our churches, our nonprofits. Help our community to continue to thrive and enrich lives. And, uh, we just look to you, Jesus, as our ultimate example of compassion, sacrifice. May your love and your teachings inspire us to serve our community with kindness and humility. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda, um, is open forum. If anybody has anything they wish to talk about that's not on the agenda, then please step forward to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live.
Dwayne Cookman, Mayor, Council, Staff. Um, I just have a question on the the expenses that we had or the project for Lake Alice. And it, that's just an example. As I see that we have a couple more, uh, interstate going out for bids for other projects. But, um, I just would like clarity on, okay, we have more engineering in-house, okay? But I'm gonna say, does the umbrella of the idea of the project or statement work? Okay. Goes out, now we have interstate, go get bids. Okay, could we get bids then? Or more engineering? So here's my fuzzy part of it is, okay, so this Lake Alice, okay, they have us, it was interstate had bids. Then we had a bid for, I believe, oversight or administrative, is my correct on the project because you have outside contractor doing it, they're just overseeing it. Okay. They, Moore got it, but where does that other 15% come in? Because I heard seven and a half percent. What am I missing? I mean, because let's say they, they got it, okay. Now, is it tacked on another 15%? Or was that only another seven and a half percent?
Typically, projects are broken into two. There's a design and bid phase, which is what you're gonna see tonight, I think.
Yeah, two different ones.
Yep, yep. And then, and then the second phase is the oversight of the construction if the, if the project is approved and awarded.
Okay.
And so, uh, the agreement with Moore is 15%, you know, half for the bidding, for the design and bid process, and then half, you know, the other seven and a half percent for the oversight of the actual project. So if a project doesn't go to fruition and doesn't get awarded, then you're, you're only gonna get that portion of it.
That seven and a half percent?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And with that, we, uh, have approval of the agenda. I think, uh, Councilmember Leighton has asked for items three and six on the consent agenda to be removed. Um, anybody got anything else they care to add to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Scott?
I'd like to, under new business, add a review and a possible, a change to the buffer zones in our cannabis ordinance. If we could begin a discussion on that, please. And with that, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Scott.
That'll be under new business, you're not?
Uh, we can do it under old business, um, old business because we already have it. So, um, would somebody care to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. There are no public hearings this evening, so bids to award, there are no petitions and communications. Under consent agenda, we have remaining items, motion approving the minutes from the open and closed meeting, July 21st, 2025, city council meeting, and the July 30th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting. Uh, motion approving the licenses, um, a motion directing the city attorney to draft changes to the city ordinance regarding utility billing, resolution approving and authorizing signatures on an MOU with M State regarding sexual assault victims on campus, and a resolution approving the D Lagoon campground rates. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
Some of.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody care to second it?
I can do that.
Thank you, Laurel. Um, roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Um, the first item, um, resolution awarding the sale of GO PRI bond series 2025, Councilmember Leighton, you asked for that to be pulled.
Do you want a motion first, Your Honor, or not?
Sorry?
Do you want a motion on it or not?
No, he, uh, Scott, I mean, he asked to pull it, so.
I've analyzed this bond many ways. Um, it's darned if you do, darned if you don't. As I indicated before, it's a small product, project. I want to do, not do the bank bond, use our own funds and wait till next year. I've had extensive conversations with Bill, and he's been very helpful. Uh, there are statutory limitations, so there is no certainty. Although I do believe that interest rates can be lower last, next year, and we have a percentage of assessments, uh, to qualify if we were to get, uh, bonding for this project and a road project next year. So I'm gonna yield to the decision of this council. But at the same time, I'm very concerned that when the council was asked that we go out for bond, the next time that happens is there's a full disclosure of what we're getting into. I think last year, or last, um, meeting, I said, we have to be careful as a council as to what we vote for. Establish an avalanche and we can't stop it. Uh, here's a situation where, uh, the avalanche started, we weren't aware of the fees, we were unaware of the legal fees. Uh, those costs to that bank bond are some $33,000 bucks. And at this point, we're halfway down the, the mountain and can't stop it. So as we move forward, all I ask is this council be fully informed before we go forward and ask for a bid, a contract, or any other agreements, so that once it comes back to the council, you know, we're not stuck. Similar to, if you will, we're gonna quote, let's say we're gonna work on, uh, the alley. We wanna talk about the parking lots. I'm fearful if we-
That's gonna come up in a moment, so we'll talk about that one in a second.
Yep, I don't wanna, I don't wanna add that to it because that starts an avalanche, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate where Bill's help. Um, I'm, my point making is, uh, I, I just feel, uh, this project's too down, too far down the, the mountain, and we can't stop it. It's too late, and we didn't vote for it. Thank you.
I think, um, I, I actually looked at kind of this as well, and because obviously at the committee of the whole, there was two kind of, uh, two kind of chains of thought going on. Um, and I kinda just looked at the current proposal, and I, I just did a, a very simple calculation on the 4% and came up with the interest cost of the city would be around $160,000. And there's some nuances in how, uh, the, the bonding and that works, so my numbers are not absolute numbers to the, to the bond. But, um, and that's obviously over a 10-year period. If we financed the $716,000 over 15 years, the interest rate would need to come down to 2.7% um, to be able to even break even on the 216. Um, if we were to finance the 216 with the costs that have been incurred, um, to date, which was 16,000, which is actually probably more now, plus the loss of interest, if we leave the $716,000 in the bank, um, we're getting at least four to four and a quarter percent on that, that's another $30,000. So we would be financing $760,000, um, and interest rates would need to come down to 2.55, um, to be able to get there. And not that I don't, uh, disagree with, uh, Councilmember Leighton, that interest rates are gonna come down. I, I don't believe they're gonna come down into the two and a half percent range. And if interest rates remain the same, at 4%, um, the interest rate would actually cost the city around $260,000 because we're going over a longer period of time. Um, so, you know, today, we're looking at kind of 160, you know, if we defer this and push it out and go over 15 years, you're looking at more like $260,000, um, in terms of interest costs. So.
And I appreciate that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
But at the same time, uh, and again, there's too many variables here to, to make this clear for anybody. I, uh, you know, if you were to be able to bond this next year with a larger dollar amount and over 15 years, the actual, the actual levy to the community would be less. And that's what I was looking at, and not necessarily the cost.
Yep, thank you.
Your Honor, I appreciate the numbers from you, and I'm not gonna argue whether to go cash or, or do the, the bonding. That's, that's not my position here on the council. I think, I think the question that it, it kinda bears out for us in the future as we go down this, um, is there times that we should use cash? You know, is there times? Uh, maybe there's never a time to use cash, maybe there's a time to use it, and I think that's the bigger question I have. Mr. Leighton brings it to, to the table that, hey, it might be an option at times that we do. And one of the questions I have, uh, to kinda go by that is, does Baker Tilly, we know there's a $33,000 cost for them to go out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this kinda in layman's terms, to go out and find us an interest rate at a bank, which, which to me is a lot of money, $33,000 to do that. Uh, Mr. Sonmore, are those rates, that $33,000, is that based on, you know, the, the size of the bid? Is it a percentage type thing? So if we've got $750,000, it's $33,000. If we're at $5 million, it's $100,000. How does that calculation work? Because I think what it'll do is it'll help us if something's small sometimes, and the rate is exactly the same for Baker Tilly, that's something that might give us pause, so.
So it is on a tiered structure, like you're saying. So anywhere up to like $3 million is probably for Baker Tilly at that $18,000 level. On top of that is our, um, bond attorney fees as well, and we're gonna have that on any issue as well, and that grows with the size of the, the issue. And I can't quote the tiers on that, but they're tiered structure on both. Um, I want to speak to the cash, just so everyone knows, certainly the Junius and the Shoreview projects are larger than $716,000 because we're doing the water sewer and the storm as well. And we're actually using cash reserves to pay for all of those, so we're just financing the street portion. And we have, you know, we manage that in our rates to, um, to plan for cash on those type of projects. You'll see that as we bring future ones back as well, too. We don't have cash sitting to pay for this project. What we would do, if that were the case of carrying it, we would actually run the project fund into a deficit, in essence, borrow from another fund. For, so we don't have cash that we would just dump into that street project. If we did, that's what we would do, if we had built that up over time, so.
So, Mr. Sonmore, I, and, and I trust your judgment. This is not to, to bat you around at all. Is it your discretion when we use cash and when we bond, or whose, whose discretion is that?
Um, that's, we come to you with the finance plan and lay that out. Um, so yeah, I'll certainly bring a recommendation because, for instance, there will be a time when we're gonna come and bring a large project to you, and we can probably say, you know what, sewer fund, we can pay cash for that, but oh, the water fund and the storm water fund, we may need to use some cash and borrow some, and that we show you in the finance plan when we bring that.
Okay, and that's what we had with Junius, did we? Did we have, I'm asking, did we, no cash was going into half of it and, uh?
I'm thinking we did when we brought that originally.
Yep.
I can't picture it in my mind at the moment, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
The other question I have, then, did Lynn have something to add?
It was on that memo that you, the council had when they approved it.
Okay, so we did originally have that in? Thank you.
The other question I have, then, with Baker Tilly, what's our relationship with them? How long have we had it? Uh, when was the last time we sent out a request for proposals for this type of service? Do we have five years with them, 15, 25? How long?
It's over, it's over five, but probably less than 15. I don't remember exactly, because, um, yeah, we were with, I'm trying to remember the name of the firm before, for quite a number of years, and then we went for proposals, went to Springstead, they were called, and they, that Springstead merged with Baker Tilly was the migration there. So it's been a number of years.
Okay. All right. Would somebody care to make the motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion.
Resolution, rather?
I'll make a resolution, uh, going with Bill's suggestion in the email, your proposal.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Laurel. Thank you, Jim. Right, roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. The next item is the resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing interstate engineering to advertise for bids for PI 5855, the Lincoln Avenue alleyways and parking lot rest reconstruction. And Mark, over to you.
I think I was concerned, um, I should say questioned. This is referring to interstate. Is this something new or old, or?
No, you asked for it to be pulled.
No, I know, but I, why is interstate in there and, and we have a more contract with Moore?
Interstate started the project.
Correct. Thank you.
So.
Your Honor, I do have a question on it. When we were looking at doing the alleys as a, um, secondary, like a bid option, does it make sense to add a second option to that where we, uh, look at a completion date of next spring versus now to see if we can get a more favorable number if there's not a hammer over their head?
Oh, Kyle?
Or is that even an option at this timeframe?
That is an option and definitely something we could talk about, uh, doing, uh, at the, at this time, you know, by the time we bid this, we're gonna be, um, almost to September. So, um, the timeframe's gonna be very short. So we could look at putting a completion date into next year, but then we, we will have to go throughout the winter, uh, with the condition of those streets as they are, which normally winter isn't that bad. It's, it's when we get to the springtime, it will, it will be very messy at that time.
I mean, I, I want them done. I'm just trying to, like, if, if there's, I, I caught on to some hesitation amongst the group, and so I'm wondering if we can bring the cost down some.
Yep.
I don't know if we could or not. But I think we should bid both, not just next spring.
We could do that.
Your Honor?
Yep.
Is September bid too early, Kyle? Should it be October, November? When can we take this to, what's the latest time that you could take this to bid? I'm looking for.
To have it completed this year?
No, completed next year.
Oh.
My, my point is.
We could, we could bid this, i- if we, if we were gonna plan to do this next year, we could bid this, this winter.
Right.
Would probably be the best time to bid it?
Correct.
Probably January, February timeframe?
That's my understanding. I think the contractors are gonna have a better idea what asphalt costs, what, uh, fuel costs. Uh, they're at the end of the, these guys are done this year, right? I mean, they're, they're not gonna look at anything.
Potentially, but yeah. Normally, the January, February timeframe, you're getting more competitive type bids as well because contractors are looking to fill their schedule up for next year.
Correct.
They're probably full at this time.
They're, I, I believe that.
There could be a contractor, though, that has, has a spot open and, and would do something, but yeah. More than likely, the best timeframe for bidding is January, February.
I would move that we, uh, consider moving that bid process to later January, February.
I got, I think, I mean, I agree on the parking lots, I don't know if that's, that could wait, but this alley, you guys drove through the alley since they've done this?
It's not good.
I mean, I'm not gonna leave my businesses and, and Laura, she, she works in that alley, she knows, and so I'm not all in favor, I mean, we can wait, we can look at the bids, favorable bids, but I don't think they're gonna be that much difference. I, everything's kinda coming down a little bit, but not, not greatly. And so, but if we could put a both on her, that's fine, but I would like to see it done this year because of the, of the alley conditions. I mean, they're terrible.
I think, Mike?
You know, I'd agree with Mr. Rachel, as Councilmember Rachel's, that that alley has to get done this, this year somehow, some way. But, um, I'm still coming back to my constituents or the constituents of this city with Kabor Avenue. And if we're looking at Kabor, and I've been kind of promised by Mr. Meyer that it's number one on the list for Kabor, can we bid that Kabor and those parking lots since it'll be more favorable in the spring? Can we get all of that in one swipe, uh, to kinda bring down some of the costs and get them both done, uh, all in one, instead of bidding those parking lots in September and not getting them done this year and then coming back? Can we bid everything in, in the spring? And I guess the reason I ask that to you is I wanna, I want Kabor to be tied in with that so it gets done.
We could include those because they're right adjacent to Kabor, and, um, talking about Kabor being number one on the list, we are working on the CIP plan right now, um, working with Bill and staff going through the budget so we can bring those numbers to you. Um, you will end up approving that, but we will be bringing that shortly, uh, to the council. Kabor is on the list, yes.
And you can split those parking lots in Kabor. You, you can split them for us for a spring, spring deal for the council to decide. I mean, you, you'll, you'll split it that they'll come with a bid for everything, but if you knock off the parking lots, it'll be this amount.
Alternates.
Yep, we can, we can split it out anyway we, we would like.
Okay, sounds good.
Is it, one question. Is there any advantage to doing Kabor bef, or doing the parking lots prior to Kabor for the ease of use, no park, and we're gonna lose on-street parking for Kabor, things like that? To have the parking lots done first, does that help our businesses? Because we need to have as little impact to our businesses as possible.
Sure. Obviously, if they were paved today and we were doing Kabor next year, that would be, um, better access and parking for, you know, those businesses over there. Um, it's something we could look at to put some timing in so that one is done before the next. That may elevate the price, uh, to do in the work, but that can be done.
I think, I think we get the alternates and get the bid, and then we can make a decision. I mean, the biggest one is, as you say, is getting the alleyway done this, this year.
And if you look at it, when you do the alley, Your Honor, sorry, if you do the alley and the parking lots together, it does a more uniform job than it does if you come back and do the parking lots later. It's, it's gonna be a, a patch type looking where they join. And so that's my concern, but.
I mean, at this point.
I wanna look at the bids.
Can somebody make a resolution to, thank you, Scott?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laurel. Um, with that, roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda under ordinance and resolutions is a resolution accepting donations to the Fergus Falls Fire Department. I will call upon the Chief Ryan McCow.
Your Honor, I'm gonna step down and join you.
All right. Well, Councilmember Leighton's coming down here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Mr. Leighton, uh, will, uh, come down here and bring forth the, uh, the amount that, uh, he had gone out with our business community to do some fundraising for some, uh, gear purchases that we don't typically budget for, but we also need to replace. Um, and that coupled with a, a grant from the DNR, um, is gonna go a long ways for our, our team. So by the, at the end of this, it'd be asking for a resolution accepting the donations presented by Mr. Leighton, and then an increase to our 2025 donation revenue budget and the expenditure budget accordingly. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chief. And when the siren sounds in Fergus Falls, our volunteer fire department drop, drop everything. You're gonna answer that call, whether at home, at work, on the farm. They're gonna go out to a fire. They're gonna go out to a car accident. They're gonna serve the public every day, every hour of the day. All volunteer departments rely on both the city budget and funding and local donations to maintain their equipment, continuing and education requirements for those who respond to all and any emergency. Fergus Falls Fire Department has been well-run, managed in all aspects, recruiting, budgeting, training, and I've always supported Ryan McCow and his staff. On behalf of the citizens of Fergus Falls, I have a check here for $7,750. Bill, I have the checks here. You want them?
Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I will make that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Thank you, Jim.
You could've let the poor guy sit out and make it himself.
Oh, hmm. Oh, it's probably a conflict.
Could've been. He probably had to abstain.
Yep, so, um, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The donation resolution is approved. Don't spend it all at once. Um, the next item is the first reading.
Excuse me, Your Honor. Bill, the people wanted to have that confidential, so I don't know if there's names gonna be published.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Um, the next item is first reading of ordinance 78 series utility charges, um, the change in the language, um, bringing it to the new software. We just need that introducing, if somebody would care to do that. Thank you, Jim. I think that's it, isn't it? The, the next item, eh, on the agenda is a resolution approving plans and specifications for PI 5367, the trunk highway 210 utility relocation and authorizing interstate engineering to advertise for bids. I'd probably call on Kyle, no, he's already up there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, tonight, uh, we're asking for a resolution for approval of plans and specs and authorizing interstate engineering to advertise for bids for the relocation of, uh, Fergus Falls utilities, water and sewer mains within MinDOT's right-of-way, interstate right-of-way, uh, for the roundabout project that will be happening next year. So this project includes, uh, moving our, uh, sanitary sewer and water mains that are within, uh, the interstate, uh, um, round, or within the roundabout area. Uh, so this is, this project is looking to be done this fall, uh, prior to the 94, uh, trunk highway 210, uh, roundabouts being completed next year.
Would somebody care to make that resolution? Well, Scott Quamby and Laura Jobe.
This, Your Honor, this will be done, that, that part will be done this year, and then, uh, I keep getting questions about how long the roundabouts are gonna take. Are they gonna be done next fall, or a year from now, or is that not?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I could find out and give it to you.
There's been conflicts, you know, everybody talks about all different kinds of questions, and I said, I have no idea.
It's not starting until next year. Um, it, it'll be a lengthy project. I don't know if it can be done in one season, but I can, I can find out and report back.
Your Honor, is the city, Kyle, is the city obligated to, to pay all these, or is there any state funds?
There is state funds on this. Um, MinDOT, a, a, a large portion of this will be paid for by MinDOT. Uh, on a sheet here, uh, or on the council action recommendation sheet, uh, the construction estimates, uh, around $770,000 with about $640,000 being paid by MinDOT.
Is that just a, a typical, or is there a percentage out of the? Or is there a percentage out of they come up with that number?
That, I would have to visit with Interstate on that. There's a, there's a certain amount of utilities within the right-of-way that are eligible for MinDOT costs. And then there's, there's some of it that we're doing minor outside of the right-of-way. That is not, that is not eligible.
Good. That was the same thing when they had the, if you will, the money's for miles on our. As long as they're capped out, that's great.
With that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving an interim use permit for VTD O L L C doing business as seniority dispensary at 112 East Washington Avenue in a B3 general business district with conditions. Obviously, this property has physically been before the council previously under an application by Sugar High. Obviously, it was approved. Since then, Sugar High moved to their old premise and rescinded the I U P on this. The conditions for this application are exactly the same. I don't know whether, sorry? And, and it has obviously an additional updated language on the conditional use, which is a five-year timeframe for the interim use permit. Business hours are limited to 10 o'clock to 8 o'clock. There will be no consumption on-site, including sampling. Property owner must obtain and retain written consent from each residential tenant stating that they have been informed of the business use permitted under the interim use permit. Copies must be made available to the city upon request. And I believe a copy of those was on everybody's desk from that. Obviously, the planning commission heard this application last Monday and approved it. A message following, the minutes were included in this. And also, there was a ladder from a neighbor that obviously was objecting to this in the same way that that was previously done. So with that, I mean, nothing has necessarily changed. If we can put a resolution on the floor and then we can have a, we can have some discussion after that.
I'll offer.
Scott making that resolution? Would somebody care to second that?
I'll start.
Thank you, Jim. Right, Mike?
Well, I was just going to make a point of order. If it was a resolution to approve only or a resolution to deny? It had to be a resolution to approve based off of the wordage?
It has to be. Yeah, and then you would have to, you'd vote against it, as it were, to deny it.
Good, I appreciate that. I'll start it off, your honor, if that's all right with you.
Yep.
My, my position, this, this is not a cannabis issue for me. My position is still on the, the actual ordinance and the law that this council put into place that had a buffer limit of 250 feet from any type of city park entity that has some form of an attraction that a minor could frequent. I still believe that this one, same as the last one that came through, in my opinion, is still a violation of the ordinance, a violation of the law that this council went to withheld or to withhold. The reason it's even gotten more that way for me is last time we were in the chambers, I talked about, you know, the, the River Walk, and I talked about different entities going down there and different things like that. This time, I actually went down to the River Walk to take a look around. I went down, I seen the placards. I walked down there, hadn't been down there in years. But the thing that was very intriguing to me when I got down there that I didn't realize was there is that there was a placard stating that this was a North Country National Scenic Trail. And, and I had no knowledge of that last time we were in these chambers and we were voting on this. And so I started to kind of investigate what is a North Country National Scenic Trail? The word national is what really, really kind of dawned on me. Like, this isn't just a local River Walk. It actually is more. And what I found out was, is that in 1980, Congress had placed this as the North Country Trail. But in 2024, this trail now falls under the National Park Service. This is one of 438 National Park, either parks or trails in our country. This takes this to a whole different level of an attraction in this park to me when the National Park Service is administering this trail that we have just a few feet off of our building here. So one of the things I started to look at was, okay, it's a National Park Trail, but is anybody, anybody using it? And what I found out is the National Park Service has designated this North Country Scenic Trail as a program for what they call Junior Rangers, Junior Rangers here in our community. And what a Junior Ranger does is he, in conjunction with the National Park Service, he will go over, someone in our community, a minor, go over to the Prairie Wetlands. They will pick up a packet that shows them a map of the North Country Trail through our community. And then what they will do is they will write down what their experience was like, what they did in that trail, what they did in that National Park. And then they supply it back to the Prairie Wetlands, and they get what's called their National Junior Ranger Badge. They become a National Park Service Ranger as a, as a young adult. When I kind of read that, your honor, it, it just hit home with me that in this community, we need to decide, is this something that is an attraction for people? Not just in our community, but could, could come from other places? And do we need to? And I believe we do. We need to stand by that ordinance at 250 feet. I'm not an attorney, but I can assure you that if someone came to me in a court of law or somewhere and they said, hey, there's a Junior Ranger program. This is a National Scenic Trail. The National Park Service is administering this trail in our park. That has to be considered an attraction. So what I would ask is that the council not go forward tonight with this licensure and that we ask the, the company to just move outside of that 250 zone of this park and continue their, their quest for being in our community. I think it's important to this whole community. I think this speaks volumes to what this is down here. And I would not like to see it go forward tonight.
Anyway, Scott, did you have something to say?
Yes, your honor, I'd like to offer an amendment and an additional condition limiting the I U P to three years instead of five.
Then we, yeah, I think that would have to be approved by?
Me and Jim?
By you and Jim.
Go along with that. Not go along.
Any discussion on it?
Not about that.
Not on that issue.
But I have the first discussion. I would have to agree with Mike. You know, there's four council members who voted to go against the ordinance. There's four council members that voted to break the ordinance. And the mayor agreed with the four that to break it. I cannot vote against an ordinance. It comes down to that. I have no problem looking for other areas. I like the idea of competition. I think there should be more people. If they want to put their name in the hat to get a license to do this, fine. I just don't think that's the, the area for it. It comes down to breaking an ordinance. Now, let's keep in mind, council, when we were talking about the mall, we were doing that to save businesses. And everybody was on board with that. It's got to save the businesses. Here is something that a business wants to come in. In my opinion, if we vote on this, we break an ordinance, and we have a chance of losing a business that has been there since the 60s that has served this community for many, many years. And it's their livelihood. So you talk about saving businesses and looking at these other businesses, and you could put one right out of business. Whereas we are not restricting that this other business come into town. We're just restricting that it doesn't fall in that ordinance. So I think we have to look in the mirror, everyone. And either you want to break that ordinance or you don't. I hope the new police chief that we just hired shortly does not break ordinances. And I don't think he will. Thank you.
Your honor? So breaking ordinances, and they say, that's what they're saying we're going to do in their opinion. Now, my opinion's different. I don't believe it's, it's, it's the same. You know, it's a, it's a public trail, that's fine. But it's not when we did this intent was where children collect when we did. I believe, is that right, Laurel? And so I don't believe that we're breaking an ordinance. So that's a matter of opinion. That's all, get that through. It's not, we're not going to break an ordinance by voting yes or no on this. It's an opinion of Mike and Al. And that's, so I want to make sure. I will vote for this.
Laurel?
I guess I go back to the proposed findings that our staff has prepared here reads, "will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood or the city." And I think it's important that right now, we're looking at a, a proposed use for a property. This does not mean that this is a slam dunk that a license will be given to this property. So I think we need to look at it from the perspective of these findings. And I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how a business in that location is going to endanger, be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of anyone on that trail that is down in embankment with an access to it so far from where this business is. And so at that point, that would be why I'm voting for this. That doesn't mean that I may vote to support the license down the road. We're not at that point.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? If not, well, roll call.
You're, oh, here, may I?
No, you've been, Mark, did you want to go?
I've had a few, not a lot, I've had a few citizens call me. Regardless if you like cannabis or don't like cannabis, cannabis can be a big deal or a little deal. Affordable housing's a big deal, not a big deal. This constituent said, "Breaking the law is breaking the law." And it's unfortunate the prior council set this ordinance. It's very difficult for me to break the law. I'm not here politically. I'm here as a prudent individual. We also have a neighbor business that's very concerned. I can't vote for this. I would prefer to have the applicant find a different location. And if we approve the location, we're halfway down the hill again. We've started the avalanche. So we got to be careful what we vote for. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
No.
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 Yes.
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 Joe.
Yes.
I'll vote yes, as I did last time.
So, the resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is presentations of claims in the amount of $1,217,695.74. Any questions?
For the resolution, pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody care to second that?
I can second that.
Thank you, Laurel. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank goodness, the bills are going to get paid. The resolution is approved. The next item of business is cannabis registration process. Obviously, this was presented at the Committee of the Hall as being the next stage on the journey of cannabis in our community. Clara, did you want to talk to it? Or, there's a lot to say, really. This is, as much as anything, this is the next item. As we sort of talked on the Committee of the Hall, that there is a flow chart on this. And we're at that point whereby there are people being awarded licenses to operate. And the goal was to have an open period of, from the 8th of September, 8th of August to the September the 8th, where the applicant may submit registration materials. And then the city staff would review those between the 9th and the 10th of September. And then they would come to the council on September the 11th, where the applicants would then be vetted by the council. And the council would then make their decisions as to which license that they would offer. And they would then obviously be approved for registration on the September the 15th, where people could then obviously would get to know the decision of whether they were fortunate to get a license or not.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple things to add before you start your discussion. But one thing that we had talked about at Committee of the Hall was including a period of time for which the registration, after being provided by the city, could be active for that applicant to continue to seek their licensure from the state of Minnesota. Because, as we are aware, the state changed the timeline slightly so that we can approve a registration before their licensure is fully complete. They must be pre-approved, but they could seek it before that final approval is, is given. So, in looking at some of the state documentation of their timeline, they allow an 18-month time period following certain steps of their process for the full licensure to become complete. And then, looking at other permits that our city allows, which have six-month timelines, I landed on about a 12-month timeline for the registration to be active and for that applicant to be seeking their final licensure. In some cases, they may also still be seeking a location, because again, this is a change from what we had initially anticipated. So, we're going to need probably a little bit of flexibility with our selection policy itself, based on what we're receiving from applicants. In some cases, they may not have their final location, but we would hope that they would have some kind of site control with it. But essentially, as the mayor was saying, this is the next step in the process to allow for businesses to continue, continue on their process to licensure.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to move forward with this with a 12-month period and allowing for some changes to kind of meet the state's change in plan or path a little bit, where if there are site issues still involved, that would do some ranking to allow for sites to be ranked if they are still in process. Is that, I don't know if that's meeting kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Give it some flexibility for the site.
Yeah, so as a, as a reminder, the, the policy that's in your packets and that was approved in, I believe it was December 2024, that was based on full licensure. All of the information is coming down from the state level. They would be expected to have all of their, their site guidelines and compliance, all of that. We're on a slightly different timeline now. So, using the ranked points system to allow for some applicants to maybe have a building that they're, you know, they're working with the building owner, they maybe haven't gone fully through all of the processes with the building department, but they have, you know, landowner's signature, something like that. Still considering that as part of their application process, maybe awarding them a lesser amount of points, but still considering them as an application.
Mike, got a question?
I'm just going to wait and see if you get a second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Scott.
Mrs. Beck, I appreciate your, your time. Do we have to do this through the state of Minnesota? You, you say the word, can, may, do we have to do this through the state of Minnesota?
You do, at some point, yes, have to approve a registration.
Yes. How about the preapproval registration, though? The one where they're not fully approved, but they're preapproved through the state? Do we have to do this?
We have to consider it. The statute, Ralph, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but we...
You have to. You have to. I mean, we can only, we're allowed to register, we must allow, we must register one applicant.
Yes.
And we may register two. So you have that discretion. But, but if we get a registration application in, and if they have a valid license or license preapproval from the state, and if they've paid the registration fee and renewal, or renewal fee, applicable fees, and they're found to be in compliance, oh, sorry, found to be in compliance with the requirements of any preliminary compliance checks that we may want to review and impose, and if they're, if applicable current on property taxes, we have no discretion. We have to issue at least one. So if they meet those four conditions, that we, we must issue a, a registration to whoever meets those conditions. Now, they may not meet those, and that would be a reason to deny it. But other than that, there's really no discretion when it comes to one registration.
I appreciate that, Mr. Nicomole, because I was reading the, the ordinance 342.22, and under the issuance of registration, it uses that legal term "shall," which means that we have to do this. The question that I have for Mrs. Beck is, when they have the preapproval and we approve them, are they allowed to sell the cannabis at that time? Or do they still have to wait for the state licensure?
They still need to get their full state licensure.
Okay, good.
And that was a change, Mike? Before, it was, you, you, it was the opposite way around.
Yeah. The, the thing that I have with it, you know, there's two sides of this. One, there's locations and rules and laws, which I follow. And then the other one comes from the business side of me. And in the business world, very seldom do I run into where I have to wait for a period of time to do something. So, what I'm looking at here today, whether it was Elevate Sugar High, whether it was Vi-Do sitting here, if she has another location in Alec or something like that, if they get the preapproval tomorrow and nobody else does, that's business to me. That's business. But that'll have to be the council that decides if they want to go forward with this process. I'm of the business mindset, if you do the work, you have the preapproval, and you come before us, you get that licensure, and everybody else doesn't. That's where I would go with this, to make it a fair playing field. Otherwise, I feel sometimes there can be, even though you have scoring, you throw three, four people into a, a pot, and you sit for a month, and you let people sit and think about it, there can be favoritism that's given to businesses over others, just because of who they are. And that's not something that I like to compete against in business, and I don't believe that's something that these individuals should compete against. So, I'm not for the timeline, myself. I will vote against the timeline tonight, simply from a business background and a fairness of what should go on in this city. That's my thoughts with that.
So, Mike, are you suggesting that it should be first come, first served?
I, I do, Your Honor, I do. Just because it, you know, you can look at it and say fairness, and put it in a pot, and look through everybody and say, "We're going to grade them," and this and that. But if the state has preapproved someone, they have to have that, of course. If the state has preapproved you, they've looked at you, and we look at you, we can still deny you if we don't like it, but we look at you, you should have the right to open that business when you come. You shouldn't sit here and be someone like Vi-Do from another community, knowing that there's two local ones and that you are out. Everybody, if it's first come, first served, whoever it is, that's who I think should have the first look. That's my thoughts, Your Honor.
It can be, too. It absolutely can be. As long as we have not met our cap, and our cap is one. If we get a valid applicant and they meet those four conditions that I enumerated, you must issue it.
That's just...
And you, and you may get another applicant a week or two later, and it may be too late.
Yes.
Because we've already started that process.
I felt all... Go ahead.
I appreciate that, Mr. Nicomole, and, but it sounds like we're not doing that in this case. What we're doing is, we're bringing in a pot of them for 30 days, then we're going to sit around and go at that. I'm looking at it from, it comes in tomorrow, we look at it as a council, and we, we move, from a business standpoint.
You can do either.
Isn't this, though, this, this, I know what you're talking about, the month of opening, but we won't, don't, we have, we won't be able to do anything with it till the 15th, no matter what? Is that true?
No, I think, I think, at this point in time, I mean, we can open up for registration tomorrow if the council approves that. You know, based upon the application...
Yeah, I would just want clarity on how you want to handle the language that's up to two. I mean, would you be considering multiple? If we get applicants, you know, overnight, two of them come at once, would the selection policy still stand, or how would you handle that?
Well, I think the selection policy is only applicable to an applicant, how many applicants you get. So, I mean, if you get one, and they, and they meet the conditions, you're stuck with one. But the question is, you know, do you want a, a application period or not? I mean, if you don't, then don't have an application period, I suppose.
Scott?
I think a significant question that hasn't been answered is that whether the state has some deadline date that we must issue a permit by. I mean, let's say we had somebody qualified here today, and they, and they've qualified, as Ralph has said, and we could go, we could permit them, but under what urgency are we? I mean, do we have to permit them? Yes. But do we have to permit them today? I don't know. Would it be January 1st? Is it October? Is it next summer? When has the state said we have to actually do the permitting by?
The, the most guidance from the state that I'm currently aware of is that the city has 30 days to respond to the state when they reach out regarding zoning.
That, that would be zoning certification. So...
And that's part of the final licensing process. They have to get that box checked.
Yep, and that's one component, and that allows them to kind of take the next step with the state.
But as for, like, issuing a registration, that's, I don't believe that there's a time limit contemplated.
No. But, I mean...
Which seems kind of weird, you know, that they would say, "You got to do it," and they don't say, "By when?" If we just, as a group, said, you know, "We're just not going to act on this until February." What's going to stop us?
I think you, well, you got this thing called the 60-day rule, as well, that requires us to take some action on matters within 60 days of getting it.
Well, that's what I guess I'm looking for.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's internally. We would be probably in our best interest to make some decisions, you know, within that timeframe at a minimum, if you get one.
Yeah, but to answer your question, there are no dates, like, in the statute or, or given on the OCM website at this point.
Laurel?
I guess, there, in my mind, there's some advantage to having a timeframe, because it puts, in my mind, everyone in the same playing field. I would hope that there's no one up here that would play favorites, and that it would be a fair ranking system. But one of the things I think we should look at in, in that ranking system, in my mind, would be, is someone, is one of these new businesses coming to town going to maybe build a new building on a vacant lot, or do something that would increase our tax rolls? And I feel like if we just take the first one or the first two, we're not even looking, I mean, if we have the potential for a business coming in that's going to take a vacant lot or do something that improves our tax rolls, if we just take the first one or two, we're not looking at that option. And if that came in in the ranking system, I think that's the thing we should look at, too, if we're looking at tax base.
But, Your Honor, how long do you wait on that? For one thing.
I mean, I think that was the, the whole purpose of kind of setting a period, and, you know, it, it would be like open season, people can apply, and, you know, then obviously, you know, we would make a judgment and issue, issue, you know, one or two licenses.
Right.
I mean, if we go first come, first served, obviously, you know, for example, I mean, Sugar High is in a place they could come tomorrow with an application. And, and, you know, if they meet the criteria that Ralph has described, then you're issuing them the license.
You bet.
And that's the other thing, I just, I don't, we, when we went into this making, we, you know, Sugar High and Elevate were two of the things we talked about, trying to keep the businesses going. But there was never going to be, if somebody else came in and zoned sick, you know, one of the malls, or the, the, not the mall, the mini malls, they could come in tomorrow, and we'd have to say, "Here you go," you know, and they'd, and if there's two of them, they would be both out, you know? So, that was never intent, Mr. Mortensen, to favor these, it was just trying to make it work on the last council, not this council, the last council, to make that kind of, to make it work for them.
Your Honor.
And I would say, if there's no intent to favor, first come, first served is business. That's business. I can't sit here and say I'm all for economic development and do everything, and, and not look at a business as a business to be able to, to do what they do. I would hate to see a business that's looking to come to this town, or one that's in this town today, lose out on something because they were not, they were ready to go and they didn't do it, they sat in a pool. And I would hate to see any other business be have to hear that, "Hey, somebody got it in," and then wait for the pool. Business is business. You have to move fast, you got to buy things fast, you got to do things fast, whoever comes, and if they fit the criteria and we like them, I think should be allowed that license in this city, whoever it is.
So my question is, what is your proposed open date on, on that?
Statute, my proposed open date is now. The statute sitting in front of us, Mr. Nicomole just read the statute. It was revised as of July. It says here under subsection D.3, "We shall open a license for preapproval issued by this office immediately." So, the statute, it's a law in the state of Minnesota. I believe that we're ready to go right now.
We have a resolution on the floor to obviously go down the process of, as outlined?
I would say to open an application period primarily is what the motion, or this resolution was, in default of the policy.
With the 12-month recommendation and being able to work with the building situation.
Okay, well, that's the resolution on the floor.
Do you want an amendment?
So we could amend that to, to start tomorrow.
Can we do that, Ralph? Could I?
I'm doing the process. So the process right now would give staff, would, would basically give a one-month period, is what was recommended by staff. Okay.
So, we'd have to, if you, if you want to do, if you want to do something different, then it's written, you'd have to vote, vote this down, so...
So we're, if we're voting down right now, we're voting down the staff recommendation, basically?
Yep, we're voting down a registration period that would go from the 8th of August through the September 15th. Then somewhere, we'd need to make a resolution to say that we're open, you know, that there is no registration period, and that, you know, we would be open to applications, but tomorrow.
So, no vote, we'll rescind that, and we can start over again.
Correct.
I'm sure we understand that.
Yep. So, roll call.
No.
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 Fish. No.
Joe. No.
So the resolution fails.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, or, resolution, resolution that we open up the ability to license a preapproval candidate that has that licensure from the state of Minnesota effective immediately for preapproval licensure for cannabis in the city of Fergus Falls.
Second that.
Thank you, Mark.
Would you put it, want to put a date for tomorrow on it? Is that, would that be the best, a date for tomorrow?
I think, have we got the application ready? Is the application form ready? I mean, that would be the...
Staff, I guess, I get, we have a motion, is staff prepared to do this tomorrow?
Economic development.
Right. So, we have a resolution to, obviously, to, for anybody that has a license, a preapproved license from the state, to be able to apply for a retail license forthwith.
Timestamp, when it comes in.
Yep. In, in case there's more than one application. So, and it would be on a first, effectively on a first come, first served basis.
Issuance wouldn't necessarily be on the first come, first served, because you still have to...
It's supposed to come to the council for approval.
You're opening up applications now.
Yep.
So are we, are we voting on, we're going to give this on a first come, first served if approved, or are we literally just saying the period is now you can apply, and there's still going to be some review process?
No, I'm, I'm understanding there's, there's no review unless, if you don't, other than meeting the criteria.
They got to meet those four conditions.
Yep.
Yep.
So, roll call.
Your Honor, just one clarification. We can go down this rabbit hole pretty, pretty deep. Mr. Mortensen, if I come in with a preapproved license, and it's going to take me six months to build a building, is that going to be a hurdle versus going, and again, we go up to the, the new Burger King building that's going to be built this fall? How would that confuse the, the applicant?
So I'm looking at the process as they come in, first come, first served. So let's say you brought a license, you brought a preapproval license to me tomorrow, and we sat down.
Yep.
You're first in the, the shoot.
Yep.
You're first in the shoot to allow this council to look at that preapproval, look at your scoring, look at where you're at, to determine if licensure should go or not. The council's still going to have to decide, do we select this individual even though they're preapproved? That's my look at it. So, if you were going to build a building, just like Councilmember Kilby said, and it's going to increase the tax base way up there for us, that might be a positive for some of us on the council. Then again, it might be a weight negative for others that are on the council. So, you'd have a different position than I would in looking at it. But what I'm looking at from a business standpoint is I, I want that first one that comes in the shoot. They're going to get first shot at this to at least do this.
And that's admirable, because we've all seen hiccups and speed bumps in government. I just wanted to make sure that if I was the applicant, which I'm not, if I was the applicant and I was going to join that little mini mall at the Burger King, that's not going to be put up for six, eight, nine months. But it's a location that would be free and clear. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a clarification question. So, if we have, between now and our next council meeting, let's just say we have 35 applicants, are they all going to be presented to us to look at, and then we're just going to wait the first ones first? Or how, what happens if in, before our next council meeting, we have way more applicants than we think we maybe have? We don't, I mean, there are a lot of people that were selected on July 22nd for the right to have five locations, a license with five locations. Clara's phone might be ringing off the hook tomorrow. So I'm just wondering if we're, how are we going to handle it if we get a lot?
It's first come, first served.
And we only have three right now. We only have three locations.
Nobody that doesn't need a conditional use could have a location.
They could, but they're going to be timestamped as they go in the shoot. Timestamped in the shoot.
Who will be responsible for the timestamp? How does this come to the city, Mrs. Beck?
Comes in the mail to the city, or whatever application it'll go through.
But who's physically going to stamp it? If I walk it in and you haven't opened up the mail yet?
See the time on the email.
Yeah.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Saying that most of them come in by email, so that the email would obviously be timed, timestamped. And if they come in the mail, then obviously, the, the mailroom will have to write on it.
Or if I walk in the front desk and type stamp it, thank you.
Right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
Joe. Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Can I open up the 30 of them now? I'm just kidding.
Councilmember Kwame wanted to discuss review change on buffer cannabis zoning.
Yeah, I wasn't anticipating the change that we just did, as far as the timing of licenses and stuff, but looking ahead to what could come down the line, after this first round of activity happens, I think that it would make sense for us to go back to what was originally suggested by the state for the buffer zones, and get away from some of the fuss that we've had with the close distances downtown here. The original suggested buffer zones were 1,000 feet to a school, 500 feet to daycare, 500 feet to a residential treatment facility, and 500 feet to an attraction within a city park. And I'd like to offer a resolution, I believe is the correct way to go, to instruct staff to bring us the language to change our current ordinance to those distances.
It'd be a motion.
Motion at this point.
Be a motion? Okay, a motion to do that, then, please.
I'll second that.
Can I ask a clarifying point? Is that keeping with the limit of two, or are you looking at changing the number of licenses, too?
Wasn't looking to change the license number at this point, I was just concerned with the buffer zone distances. And if you wanted to do another amendment or another motion or anything else, I guess that's up to you, but I was simply looking at the buffer zone differences.
I just do have one clarification, so you understand. I mean, you have the right to, to change these things and change the buffer zones if you wish. to change these things and change the buffer zones if you wish. However, if you get an application in in the interim, then they've been relying upon our local laws and how they are read now. That would not be a basis to deny a future license, or that applicant license.
Right. I know that the process for this takes some time, and so whatever time that takes until this would come into effect, anything that happens before that has happened.
Right.
I understand that.
Yeah. But I mean, it's, you still can change it after the fact.
So how long does that process take, Mr. Nicomole?
An ordinance? Well, it'll be- First reading next, if you pass this and direct me to do this, you'll have your first reading at your next council meeting. I'd have to look at that. I don't think it's a zoning change. It's a, it's a, it's a- Well, the fastest we could do that, in my opinion, would be probably 60 days, two council meetings at least. It may be longer. I want to look at that question, whether or not that would require the planning commissions to weigh in.
And, yeah, I expect that it would be a series of meetings like that with the days that it takes to do it. So if it's two months, it's two months.
Yep.
Would you be willing to amend, can I ask for an amendment to the motion or not?
Yep.
Could that motion be amended to include a verbiage that clarifies the park to something that's primarily used for children or something of that, according to look at the park language so we get some clarification?
Well, I think the definition of that has to be made by the state unless, I suppose we could make our own definition, but I think that's kind of a foggy area.
We already did that.
Does that happen in September?
Yeah.
Does that happen in September or not?
Well, my suggestion would be to follow the state language as it relates to an attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors.
Okay.
To use what we have.
So no change.
I don't mean to be a smartie, but we're not following that now?
In your opinion.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Hey, the National Park walks through there.
Right. So we have a motion to direct staff, obviously, to review ordinance and bring it back to the council. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Here in none, the motion is approved. There is no new business, miscellaneous announcements, August 13, 7 o'clock, Committee of the Hall meeting, August 18, 5:30, City Council meeting. It is also tomorrow, National Night Out, and I know there are several block parties already kind of scattered around town. And I thank in advance the Fire Department and the Police Department for their involvement and the Park and Rec Team for delivering tables. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.